What better to have at our site than our arbors? I have been to, well, his graduations. I have met with the folks that train. I've seen the curriculum. I've read some of it. Thomas said, "Why don't I come to classes?" And I have a black phone, so realized it might be a good thing for me to learn, but hector competition probably wouldn't happen. So, all I've asked for Tom to do is just very short, sweet, talk about Memorial Park, what happened with the trees. And I don't know if they've got the plans, but why the trees went down. The actual plans for it, I don't have with me. I don't have them in my home, so.
Could I just make one comment? Just make one comment. I've had a number of people ask me about it.
Yeah.
And I sure would. I'm suggesting that we want to put a sign near, from maybe the sign shop that says, "Relevation in progress," or something.
What's on the?
Yeah, I'm just saying, at the sign.
On Facebook, we get one of the guys mentioned at the end of the day about, you know, we had much different costs. We're actually moving.
Yeah, yes.
I can probably make a sign and note that I'm actually close to him because he looked at the stairs some place.
Sure. Something that will be available.
It's something that's been in the works since, okay, for my, how long ago did Jaden Houser move it? Jaden Houser was the Parks and Recreation Board. When we first started tack on Memorial Park, we had to put it on hold because of the widening of eighty-two. Then we fired it up again. We had to put it on hold because of the bridge on eighty-two. We fired it up again. We put it back on hold because of the widening. Now, once the widening and ramp's done, you can proceed. So, there you go. Just tell us what's happening.
Well, one of the reasons that we took some-
Welcome, Tom, by the way, welcome.
Okay.
And you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Tom. My last name is Meroody. I'm the City Arbors Urban Forester for the City of Macedonia. One of the reasons that we've taken the trees out, some of the trees were diseased. It was pretty obvious on the trees. The blue spruce were in pretty bad shape. The maple. The trees along the driveway, not only were they starting to die, we had trucks that were going through and skidding the tree. And this has been over a period of time. It just didn't start happening. We're looking at five, six years. The trees were breaking. And we was trying to keep them the best we could. We just couldn't. The only two trees that I had a problem taking out were the two trees in the front of the sidewalk. Only reason I had a problem taking those trees out is they were healthy trees. They were really good trees. The problem that we have for moving the road ten feet into the park, with that road coming over ten feet, we had to move the sidewalk. As soon as we do that, that will compromise the root system of the trees. The wind comes out of the west. That's where all the support of those trees are right now. When we cut them out, if we happen to get a bad storm, I don't, again, we're creating our own hazards. At that point, then, we need to take them out. We do have some stuff in the works, excuse me. We are gonna redo Memorial completely. Now get with the mayor on some of this stuff. We'll talk about it later. There is a plan in the works that we are going to take care of.
Tom's doing a lot. He's making drawings. He's getting it all in place. We already got a good idea of what he wants to do with the Memorial Park eighty-two. He's a very talented man. He loves trees. He don't want us to ever cut a tree down. So, when he does, people say, "Well, you know, it didn't really have to come down." Believe me, if Tom cuts it down.
So, the, and I've talked to Tom about the fact I've had a couple of trees in my arbors. We really hated to go, especially by a whole, which are beautiful trees. Even though they did give wonderful green falls if they fall. Can I take them down? Because they were dying. Especially being by the road, and there are still houses right by there. We have to be very careful. So, the drawing itself, the Parks and Recreation Board is going to review the drawing against the Memorial Park. And once we do, we'll bring it to the table so folks can see what's happening. Yes, there'll be new trees, but there'll be appropriate trees. And there'll be trees that will have time to grow, but they will provide change at some point in time. Add anything else to Memorial?
No.
And we did the same thing, also for Sugar Bush, right? We weeded out?
Yes, we took out approximately two hundred and fifty trees at Sugar Bush Park. Now, the reason we took those out was because we got a grant project. We took the trees out. We opened the pavilion up so you can actually see it from the drive. And we put it in the playground. Now, that's still a work in progress also. We have to go back up there. We have to do the finish grid. We're gonna get concrete sidewalks. Pavilion will be concreted in. We'll have a grill set in place. And we're gonna put some rocks around the driveway itself to divert people from driving out of the park.
Is counsel aware that we, at that park, had been analyzing?
I know the place. I've met with everyone over there, folks, and we talked about the fact that it wasn't just the aesthetics, it was the safety and enabling of that path that comes in from our foot, the big wood. And there's a beautiful walking bit there that no one really pays attention to. Part of the issue there was the grant on the K four for the playground, not for anything else. So, we've struggled to make sure that we have the money and the budget for the rest of this because to get this equipment, we've got to find a place to place it and be able to do more. If you drive by there, where the chief is, if you drive by there tonight, you can see all the way to the pavilion that you couldn't before.
Well, I was talking about the horse was probably, was-
Yes, that just happened.
I don't know how big some could be.
To break the lions?
They're old. But-
Kelly's will put the repair out.
We can repair it. Johnny and I talked about it. And what we're gonna do is get longer anchor bolts. He's gonna redo it. That way, they will, like, can snap off.
Could be a couple kids together on there doing selfies.
You took this man right here, he picked it up, put it in the truck. He went and picked it up so it wouldn't make him a park.
I get it. You know, I think, I think we want to tell the residents, so we have been moving, having progress in all these areas because I think people are curious. I did have one question from some people who have been visiting the area where you took out all those trees and put in the playground over Sugar Bush about tick infestations and tick issues that we have. We have any of those problems?
I know there's some people that have been along with, that told me we've had, we have some tick issues. I haven't heard anything as far as Sugar Bush goes yet.
So, the ID check in, and the health department says, "Yes, we have ticks." Like, that's it. You have ticks for, and he takes president because there's not a spray or anything that that they can fill.
Some counties are gonna spray it from mosquitoes.
From mosquitoes.
But that's happened.
Ticks, unfortunately, even in your own home, your yards, you probably have, they're just spreading and they're carried in the trees. And when you have the trees, you kind of have ticks.
I just wondered if, you know, all those trees coming out, the ticks were migrating or is it?
Maybe they're a little more of a-
Excuse me. Oh, yeah, I'm not real sure if the health or the weather, like, the weather's real. I bet you're fine.
Yeah, that's true.
So, Tom is trying to speak for public council. That way, it'll be a presentation.
That's right. Tom is also older, as I said. Once we finally brought, bring pictures of Memorial Park and what trees, so people have even more specific. I've talked to Dr. Byer about this. And as well, is this is the conceptual drawing for, what do we call those parts?
That'll be the fire employees, fire employees.
Right. But we'll have more on that when Tom's put together wood. We'll talk about with the trees and the, are some trees already planted over here that we'll put in for our, for day.
Yes, we put those on the entrance, on our drive entrance over just off the item two. We have a couple of trees there. We're gonna start with a clean slate here, which is gonna take. I've been talking to the EPA, so we're gonna get caught up to where we need to be. We're gonna go in and grade it out. And I have some gentlemen, some contractors, that are gonna come in giving prices on the payers. We're looking at some other options for the rain guard. This is all grant projects.
And so, you notice that the nine eleven statues over here has been moved from Memorial while we worked on Memorial, but ultimately it wound up over here at the same time. Chief's not here again. I've offered to have the neighbors in case, where I'm mixing those kinds of period parts and redo the dog instead of report, please dog statue, the memorial. John Gray here, he's written that back for our ground. So, that would be something else that we can pull over here. We create the dog. And then, we can bring the pictures of what the papers look like. They're still just conceptual, but there is an actual drawing. They chose with the different colors.
Take some time. Just be patient. Patient with us, and we'll get it done. You guys will be really happy with the result.
The only other thing I'd bring up is Tom brings an area that's for case that we didn't have before. The arbors we've had up at Longwood, they're technically actually case. And they come in and say, "That one, that one, that one, that one." And then, we have that in-house. And Tom did this on his own. So, we get the benefit of what he did on his own. He's also willing, if you have a resident who said, "I don't know," said, "I'll come take a look at it and tell you if it's good, bad, or if, like, don't just take the tree down." He and I got a lot to talk about his alley wishes, because none of mine are blooming. He said, "Wait another year, and they're all coming back." So, wait another year with every poll. So, Tom is also offering to serve the residents.
I can vouch for that. Tom has dealt with me for a couple of years. And Tom, he has been to many residents for me and, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have several residents. Some residents still haven't taken down those trees, and they're not gonna take down the trees, but that's just, that's just the way they are.
I know there have been some discussions, and Justice here, he has some ideas about improving the signage at Memorial, at Longwood, improving, and in fact, he wanted to look at a little. Longwood, has that been discussed at all?
We, literally, Jimmy and Jason and I have talked about it. I would really likely get that looked at, though. I'm trying to sign up that Longwood.
That's working.
Yeah, 'cause you know, I would have to do, I could take my laptop right there and just watch whatever the rec center wants in five minutes.
You'll make it look a lot better right now. These things don't get changed over.
Well, the signs, there's a whole lot of the signs.
There's a whole lot.
Right.
Festival.
It would really be good to have electronic signs to show some of the activities. And I think, you know, we've got a good-looking.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate it. Then we'll have to talk, like, you know, the way you're all having a talk.
It's gotta be discussed at part.
What are you doing? Ready back to your second round?
Everyone, moving on. We're gonna go into legislation, Resolution Number thirty-six, two thousand and fifteen. Sylvia, that is yours. What are we, are, this is the resolution approving the mayor's removal of Scott Swaugh as Director of Finance. Are we moving on to second reading, second, third reading? Was this outside?
I think we, you know, this is the, I'm, we should get off to second.
Jan?
What did Jan say? We need to move it along, I guess.
All right. Well, why don't we go second and third reading? And Sylvia, will you take that?
No.
Okay. Ordinance number thirty-eight, two thousand and fifteen. Sylvia, that is yours. That's the emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to adopt a revised director's policy and declaring an emergency. It's not emergency, but then I would-
Well, it's, this means when it, you know, when it's passed, it's implemented, and it's immediate, but that's what it works.
We're in third reading.
And we have, have this on the books. Essentially, all this is doing is providing a path to and authorizing council members to utilize records, city records, consistent with ORC so that we don't get a hold of medical records or these other types of records which are, have to be redacted. But just giving us the opportunity to look at the records we need as we're doing our council work and moving it ahead as a priority to get that done. And since, basically, the public records policy has been revised twenty fifteen, but it's pretty much some minor adjustments from what I could see. And I did go to public records training a couple of weeks ago up at the, up at Kirtland, where they have, what is it, Lakeland College or, anyway, I think we have a presentation by the folks from the Attorney General's Office. And it looks, basically, the philosophy of the public records in Ohio is they are the people's records. We need to move forward. In council, we have a lot of detail that probably most people in the public don't care about, but we need to be thinking about as we pass ordinances and look at activities. So, just my recommendation is we move this ahead and we, you know, it's, it's not going to create any problem for anybody. It's simply showing a process by which we make a direct request, capping the record's clerk so that they're aware of any requests. And I think that we made quite a production out of these records requests anyway within the study. We, we frequently have reviewed by the law department that, for the most part, in my opinion, doesn't need it, but it's, it is what it is. The council needs to be able to look at records without a lot of impediments, and that's all this is doing. They're not giving us access to anything that isn't legal under Ohio Revised Code. And I believe, of course, if any resident wants to see these records, they of course have the right, but there is a process. We did discover, however, that, and I did confirm this when I was in the training, that the forms that we're using need to be updated to reflect to people that they do not have to identify themselves and be anonymous. All they're recommending is if you are a clerk receiving a request and the person is in front of you, that you use the opportunity, use the form to clarify-
What exactly is wanted?
What exactly is wanted. But we do need updated forms.
Well, I had, I had a situation here a week and a half ago. I asked payroll for some records, some recaps of the payroll from January two thousand and fifteen to current. And apparently, I didn't file, I have to, I asked, she forwarded to the mayor's office, Diana, who's the, who's the records desidian. And apparently, I didn't get them, and now I've been issued a public records number because council has to follow a procedure that they have posted over there on the board, if anybody's interested, from council. If you want records, Sylvia, they're requesting the mayor has a new policy for department heads and for Diana, and I'm not sure Josephine.
Well, this would monetize the policy, obviously.
But anyhow, that's not the Ohio standards, as far as I'm concerned. When I asked for the records, I should have been given them, and I wasn't, and I'm still waiting. And so, you know, mayor, do you have anything to say about that?
We're doing what's recommended by the law.
I have two questions.
Yes. I'm done. That's, I just wanted everybody to be aware that I'm not getting my records because I did not personally go to Diana. Okay? I went to the department. I'm a council member, and I need these records for, for some information that I was given, and I need to look at it.
Well, there's these things they call telephone. Why is your call?
Well, because I didn't know about the problem until last week.
Last week, call.
Dave?
Yeah, I have two questions. I know that when this was first introduced, the mayor had asked Sylvia for a copy of the forms. Do we get that to the mayor? Request forms? There's no new request forms. I thought he'd asked for some.
But you had said the form that we had is outdated, so what is the? Well, we do need it updated, but it's got nothing to do with the changes. It says that you will submit me an email in this.
But if the form is wrong, what does the form need to be changed?
Well, all it needs to do is identify that you're not required to adapt.
Okay, Sylvia, there's a copy in that.
Yeah, there is. I know what it's supposed to say.
I think what Dave was saying, have you given that to the?
Why'd you make it up? Do you have it?
They have it. I'm not sure.
I just wanted to make sure that they've been there. Janet asked, Janet asked for that we have the department at our work session, and they weren't at the work session, the last, the last work session. So, I don't know who will handle this until we have a work session that Janet requested or not. That's my only comment.
Nick, do you have any comments?
I think Dave makes a good point. I mean, if we're really gonna dive into this, then be prudent, make sure that we're on point, that maybe we ought to hold this and have that conversation.
I think we need to schedule it, then, if we're gonna have it. You know, we do have a summer hiatus, or the more mini hiatus this time. One of the things I would suggest if we're gonna do that is we would start our work session on June eleventh at six o'clock, so we can have them come in.
Is Josephine?
So, June eleventh is our next conference meeting?
Correct.
Do we have a public hearing at some point?
I know.
So, I guess the question is, when the law department gets here, we could ask what nights they're available and schedule it before June eleventh.
Or we could, what I was suggesting, we schedule it on June eleventh and come in at six.
Should that give us enough time?
We have a public hearing.
But if not, we can hold it, there's more urgency.
Well, I disagree. And I, it's been held long enough. I'm willing to certainly have them come in and look at this, but we can have it looked at on the eleventh because the next available-
I really don't want to shortchange it. We have a work session. We have a public hearing with council. Let's not shortchange the discussion.
And they didn't show up at the, after the safety meeting that they were supposed to come to, too, at all.
They didn't even show up.
And that's when the work session was, was scheduled for the law department. They didn't show up.
So, why don't we schedule for them for maybe the ninth or the tenth of June?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm suggesting we, either the first or second or third, eighth, ninth, or tenth. That's six nights. I think we can all make ourselves available one of those nights, and the law department, too. Does everybody, everybody do that?
I'm not available next week.
Okay.
Being a non-council member, I might try to-
All right, so we're available seven, so you would be available seven, eight, or nine?
Well, nine, basically.
Seven is a Sunday.
Seven's a Sunday. Eight, nine, ten.
It's got terrible television on Sunday, so we might as well come here.
Yeah, well, that's-
All right, eight, nine, or ten.
All right. I don't have a problem doing that.
Nine or ten.
All right, so this, you say you're good eight and nine?
Nine.
Ninth and tenth, I'm sorry. All right, so let's talk to the law department when they get here and schedule it for nine or ten. I'm sure they're available one of those nights. Well, that would be at seven. It's like this, it's just a regular, you know, it's just a normal, it's already worked for me. It wasn't both three days.
You'd like that?
Okay.
Your research will be over.
Moving on. Moving on, ordinance number fifty-one, I will take that. It's an ordinance amending Chapter thirteen twenty-seven, the codified ordinances by replacing requiring rental property interior, exterior inspections and fees. I don't believe Mr. Redd's in here, and-
There absolutely no count about this.
No, I know, so.
Which is-
Is everybody okay? Do you wanna go second for reading on this? Jan, do you have a problem? Sylvia?
I say second, in case anybody-
Yeah, I, my own view would-
It's another one we all need to rush, so.
Right. Because we have an opportunity on the eleventh.
Okay. All right. Ordinance number fifty-two, two thou, that's gonna be second reading, by the way. Ordinance fifty-two, two thousand and fifteen. Ms. Tully, that's yours. That's the ordinance amending section. That's gonna be the eleventh. Okay. Moving on to ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand-
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Make your second.
On the public hearing issue, I appreciate the fact that we have a public hearing, and I, but I think we need to have a work session after this because this is, I think, a very significant piece of legislation. Not that I want to spend my summary in work sessions, but the law department, the mayor, and the police chief have all put this out and said, "This is a, a working copy. We are not making recommendations in either way, and it's something council to tweak appropriately." And I don't think we really have an opportunity to dive into these issues in a work session. And so, I would ask that we figure out when we're gonna have a work session that this issue will, whether you wanna do it before or after June eleventh is up to you. We can do it on the ninth or the tenth, I think, next.
I think it's a good idea. If we're gonna come in on the ninth or the tenth in June, we should just do it after we're doing, we're done with the public records, because I don't think that's gonna be that long, because it's already written by the Attorney General.
I think, I'd like the law, I think the, well, the law department's gonna be here at the end, and I think the, I'd like to have him, the police chief, and I would hope that he or Lieutenant Yatkovitz would be able to attend.
Well, of course, we are gonna get public input. I did respond to Michael and Judy Wolf. They had sent an email to all of us about this specific issue of re-raising, and I suggested that, you know, I sent them a copy of the legislation, and I suggested leaving it on the channel on June eleventh. Because this is going to have people both ways on this on trip.
And whatever, even though we would need to be in a public hearing, we're not gonna put it in stone, obviously. We're just trying to discuss and get tentative work, idea of work and work. Okay, thanks.
Nick, do you have any comments?
We can move to second.
Yes, we're staying, we can move to second.
Yeah.
Right. Ordinance number, and Jan, you know you're reading next to second. Did I tell you?
It's a-
Ordinance number fifty-four, two thousand and fifteen. Sylvia, I'd like for you to take that. That's an ordinance for creating money for finance, computer maintenance, in-house. And what did you find out?
Well, I looked at it, and we expended quite a bit of, there were eight thousand dollars originally, and we've only got, you know, about fifteen hundred left. And yet, basically, we expended about seventy-nine percent of the original.
How much is left?
It was around, you know, fifteen hundred. And I had the number written down somewhere. I'm not sure on anything. But it was seventy-nine point, oh, five percent of our expenditure, of our appropriations that we expended. And I was just wondering, you know, what was driving that? It's not that I object to providing more funds. We have the funds to do it. I just wondered why we're spending it such a hurtfully finance.
Or not, and let me explain.
Okay.
In two thousand and twelve, we spent eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four thousand. In two thousand and thirteen, we spent nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand and fourteen, we spent eight thousand. So, we probably budgeted eight thousand.
Really good.
But because of that number. But in two thousand and fifteen, we got our fees.
We have your-
The fees for the-
The software fees?
Software fees.
Okay.
So, the software fees came this year instead of last year. And now, we're asking for, right now, maybe-
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, and we, that should do it because we were hit with the fees instead of last year.
That's, that's a problem. That's, I just wondered what the issue was.
Does anybody have a problem doing second for reading on this?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, we're gonna go second, third. Moving on, ordinance number fifty-five. Dave, I would like for you to take that one. That's an ordinance appropriating funds for the semi-annual payment to crews and associates for the North Freeway Drive Improvement Bond, which is due June first thousand and fifteen.
I did check into this, too. I did check into this too. There's a very minor amount of money, six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I, I think because there's a bond and everything that's.
Well, obviously. I noticed there was a little bit of money. There is a little money in there.
Oh, no.
How much is, when is, did the bond payoff is what?
It's, I think they said.
Sixteen percent?
No, no, it was June first.
We, we should have.
June of, June first. So we have to do something tonight because there isn't enough money in that line to complete the process.
The payment is twenty-two, three, twenty-eight. We're missing.
Right, you know, my question is, when is the final payoff?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look.
That's fine.
Okay, um, if everybody's okay with three, we're going to move on to three on that one. Uh, ordinance number fifty-six. Um, Dave is doing that one. And, uh, ordinance, uh, ordinance number fifty-six. Uh, Nick, would you please take that? And that's an ordinance confirming final appointment of Michelle, is it Ellis, to the position of part-time dispatcher? Um, which the safety meeting was the other day. And, uh, I think everybody in the safety committee may actually want to talk about that.
This is the final.
I know, I know. I know, but do you want to talk about, oh, you want to talk about on the. All right. So everybody knows that there was a safety meeting. You weren't here. Um, and I. So we're going to do first, second, and third reading on that. Okay. Ordinance number fifty-seven, I'll take that one. That's an ordinance confirming the final appointment of Eric Anderson to the position of part-time firefighter. We'll do three readings on that when we adjut. Moving on, ordinance number fifty-eight, two thousand fifteen. Jan, would you please take that one? It's an ordinance confirming the final appointment of Paul Solinsky to the position of part-time firefighter. I think three readings on that as well. Does anybody adjut?
I'd say Jay because there's two Pauls now, it looks like.
Junior.
Okay, it's junior?
Yes. Yeah, the person's name is Paul, but that's.
Right. Um, ordinance number fifty-nine, two thousand fifteen. Sylvia, would you please take that? That is the ordinance.
Jesse Johnson.
Yeah, confirming the final appointment of Jesse Johnson to the position of part-time firefighters. I believe we should do three readings on that if nobody adjuts.
Yep.
Resolution number sixty, uh, two thousand fifteen. Dave, would you please take that? That is a resolution appointing Kent Schelko to the board in zoning code of appeals in order to fill the vacancy. Who's lead?
And this man was recommended as quite.
Right, yeah, we did.
Yeah, it was amazing. And I, uh, he really, really wants to be part of the city and see the game stuff. Correct. That's kind of.
Does anybody have any questions or do they mind if we go through readings on this? Okay. Ordinance number sixty-one, two thousand fifteen. Uh, Nick, would you please take that one? Um, sixty is Dave. And, uh, ordinance sixty-one, two thousand fifteen. It's an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendments to Section three point oh-one of the charter, appoint a mayoral primary purpose for May of the election year in the event there are more than two mayoral candidates. Dave, would you like to speak, uh, since we're on to the charter?
Sure. The next several, all of the charges, you, I understand that. Have the first, second, and third reading and ask that people have time to comment. When I, when I review, Joe Kate indicated that that's how it's been done in test and there are. And that there's time to do that, so I'm asking.
Are we doing first reading tonight?
Yes, yes. I'm asking for three separate readings.
Oh, that's what I'm going to make sure of.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's a two-month.
So this is first reading tonight.
If you want to not take away some of the. And I don't know, Josephine, in the past, have we ever had a public hearing on these just to encourage people to come in and talk about this? I can't remember. On the charter review issue, okay. Right, we were.
You've given the auditors of the charter review issue to.
Probably not tonight. I think eventually we need to have some time to talk about. I'm going to, I'd like to maybe if we get a good date to do that, maybe we can have all the members of the charter review admission who want to come be available. They had a lot, we had a lot of debates. We had a lot of different ideas, but I think we were, I think for the most part, we came to pretty, uh, not maybe unanimous, but a pretty good majority of votes on all of this. And so they're, it's, it's.
Okay. All right, um, ordinance number sixty, number sixty-two, two thousand fifteen, that will be me. And that's an ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendments to Section three point oh-three of the charter, changing the number of, of the members of council needed to override a mayoral veto from two-thirds to four members.
If, if, just for clarification, if we're not actually, uh, it's, it's more of a clarification. Correction is I think it's, uh, two-thirds of six or five is four. And we're, we're changing it from two-thirds to, to the number to be consistent with other charters and parts where it's changing the actual number to that is needed for a mayoral to override.
We didn't, we didn't, the best of features took this.
No, I'm just, I'm going to go through them and he can read and talk about what he.
No, I mean, but I mean, just for.
Um, ordinance. Yeah, we're going, yeah, we're going first reading on all of these.
I know. So the third reading will be perfect because with the two of them is.
If you want to read it tonight, I'll be happy to make a thirty-second floor if we do the public reading. So people kind of end to get the flavor of the issue.
Right. Um, ordinance number sixty-three, two thousand fifteen. Jan, I'm going to have you take that one. It's an ordinance providing for submission of the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendments to Sections three oh-three and four oh-three of the charter, changing the presiding officer at the meetings of council from the mayor to the president of council. Okay, uh, and that's pretty much self-explanatory, right? Everybody gets that one. All right. Uh, Sylvia, ordinance number sixty-four, two thousand fifteen. Um, I'd like you to take that one. And that's an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to the Section four point thirteen of the charter, changing the number of votes for removal of a member of council from four to three.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, that's.
That's just a, yeah, that's a, basically a correction on the numbers because it didn't change properly when we changed to five.
But as of right now, it only takes three members of council to actually remove.
Now, interestingly enough, the charter requires two. So it's.
Yeah, it'd be hard to do.
It's, it's, it's an oversight and you're trying to correct it.
Okay. Just making sure, okay, because I heard this from so many people and I, I'm glad you cleared it up. Um, ordinance number sixty-five, two thousand fifteen. Dave, I'd like you to take that. That's an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendments to Article, um, five of the char, of the charter by adding separate sections for appointments of the prosecutor within the law department with the, I don't get that one.
It's, I, I think in simplest terms, it's, it's, uh, elevating the prosecutor position to a department head if all of it's not really a department head calling for his appointment by the city. It's a separation.
Separation.
Okay. Ordinance number sixty-six. Nick, I'd like you to take that. That's an ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to Section ten oh-one of the charter by changing the composition of the planning and zoning commission by removing the mayor and the appointed city member of council and replacing them with the electors of the city.
This is where we're going to, the council here would, would reconstitute the, uh, planning commission to be made by five electors or registered voters in the city, reappointed by the mayor for his term of office. Uh, remove the mayor and council from that process, which we are currently part of. And I have talked to the mayor informally and I should want to assume that the mayor thinks this is a good idea. So that's the proposal that, that there'll still be five members of planning. There will be, you know, they will be all appointed by the mayor for his term and they will all be individuals.
And, um, Mr. Mock, I served on the planning with Mr. Mock. I'm sure a lot of you know Mr. Mock. And he was very, very strong about this. He really felt that, that a council member and as well as mayor should not be.
It should not be politically.
Yes. And, uh, and it was, um, it was, he felt very strongly about that. I know that really bothered him that the mayor and council weren't planning, making decisions.
Interestingly enough, that, this was one of probably, I would say, most heated, uh, areas that we debated. And one of the leading proponents of this was a former council member who was planning for many years. Mr. Mark. Yeah, I know. As soon as I described him, I knew everybody knew. So anyways.
Well, I was actually going a different way. I thought it was somebody else. Okay. But Nick, you're going to take that one for. And let's see.
And Peggy, a former council person, was also very adamant that this was a.
Okay, ordinance sixty-seven, two thousand fifteen. Um, that will be me. I will take that one. That's an ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to Sections ten oh-two and four oh-nine of the charter by removing in the planning authority from the planning commission and making city council the planning authority and requiring that all recommendations of the planning commission be submitted to the council for approval. I believe I was here for that one. So that was a heated one too.
It was very heated, but the, the thought is that, uh, in their, the way it's submitted, there's room for adjustment in later legislation as to what would actually be coming to the planning, but it, it, to the council, but it makes council the ultimate authority in regards to planning issues after their submission to the planning department or the planning authority.
There was the discussion of the consent agenda being provided. So there wasn't a long list of things that you had individually to deal with. And you could call it out if it was an order. Thought that it shouldn't be on that. The rest of it would just be.
Yeah, it shouldn't have happened to BZA because BZA still. But yes, of course.
Certain things go to BZA, certain things go to, yeah, they always go to BZA depending on what it is. But the, um, I think it was Mr. Mark when I was sitting there. I think Mr. Mark, who had served on planning for many, many years, would have felt that, um, that council should be the main operating authority. I, if I'm not mistaken, he was very vocal about that. And he gave good reasons why, which when I was sitting there. But, uh, that's besides. Yes, that, that he can't tell you. Okay, um, so I'm going to take that one. Ordinance number sixty-eight, Jan. Um, I'd like for you to take that. That's an ordinance providing for submission to the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to Sections ten oh-one and eleven oh-one of the charter by requiring that one member of the planning commission serve as a non-voting member of the board of zoning.
The thought behind this process is that planning and BZA are, they are related, but they need to be totally separate at the time. So we didn't think it was appropriate that, that the planning member be a member of BZA. At the same time, it's a recognition that BZA should, we think, the commission thinks should have the input on what planning was attempting to accomplish or advance or why they just act. I know there's in the past, sometimes BZA meetings, meetings occurred and there was no input from, from the administration. I'm not saying that's right or that's wrong. You know, the circumstances all I'm saying is that people think that, that it's important that that occurs. It's kind of like, uh, in the Supreme Court of the United States, the Solicitor General from the United States, he was there and he can argue at any time he wants, you know, the United States may not be a party to the case. But the thought is that the city's position is important. It should be made known to BZA. Then the BZA needs to make the final decision, of course. And, but also, there's no requirement in this charter review that the member of the planning commission made a statement on it. It's certainly not up to that person. But it's trying to bring some, you know, uh. Excellent word that I couldn't remember unless I had a stroke a few minutes ago. That's what we're trying to.
Um, ordinance number sixty-nine. Sylvia, would you please take that one? That's an ordinance providing for submission of the electors of the city of Macedonia proposed amendment to Section fourteen oh-three of the charter, changing the number of votes from removal of the building commissioner from five-sixths of the members of council to four votes.
Again, this is a whole over, kind of a last change of, of charter. And everything else had gone from five-sixths to four, and this was, we believe in oversight and we're trying.
I have nothing for yours.
I, I do have something. As I allocated in my last meeting, I, I talked to the treasurer from the school system in Maryland, participating in the OhioCheckbook dot com program. I would like to offer a motion tonight to simply explore participation in this program. And I would take some time myself to look at what exactly has to happen, what resources, et cetera. But it would be good because I think our residents, and this, uh, this particular new software has been highly approved by the country for providing, uh, much more information to the citizens, you know, the entities about what money is going where and why as well. So I think it'd be a good thing, but I want to make sure what the resources might be out of the actual process.
No question. We're going to make a motion tonight to.
To, to explore this. I have the council agree to explore this.
Not to, just to figure out.
I'm not sure if we need that motion. I mean, I, I, it seems to me it'd be a reasonable thing to do, but.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not getting major resistance or something. But I, I think it'd be a great idea. I, I talked to the treasurer of the school system here in O'Pertle and she's doing it. She's an absolutely great treasurer. And she has done so much over there in terms of, I wish we had. The, to really improve the way the, the school systems, audits have been cleared and so, so it's been great. She likes this. She's worked on it.
That's one thing. Yeah, we need a motion to cover the.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
I guess I did. It's not here.
Nick, Nick told, uh, he told Josephine in June.
Is it going to be Joe?
I think we need to.
There's four, four pieces of legislation there in the calendar.
Right.
We don't have them yet. So I, I asked them to draft those through me and said we have something definitive.
That'll be three months.
Jan, I did tell, we told Mr. Black, I called him on the phone. Have you guys to safety meeting? I did tell him to make sure he knew that tonight was a regular, going to be a regular legislation on. So if he wanted to get that legislation to council tonight, that that would be fine. But they're going to do it in June because that's what you guys are talking about.
I'll ask him. If he needs them, he has to have them.
Well, we're all for budgets.
I think he's okay.
We've got all the money. The airport purchase sort of should have been signed. Nothing should be. If you think of the concept of this as a contraption, it's not, it's contraption. We're obligated. Whether they spent it all.
Well, we are contraption. We are contraption. I agree. And they have managed to have, yes, by basically telling people that they have to wait.
Because it's not on the agenda. They keep putting it on. Because it's not on the agenda, they can't put it on the side.
Well, that's basically what's happening.
Well, can, the first, uh, meeting in June, can we go to reading time? Yeah, okay, so why don't we just do that, just have them bring it in June, the very first meeting, and have a reading. I tried to get, I tried to get this moved tonight, but it definitely was not on the legislation, and.
Well, there was another one that was open for second, I didn't bring it, I have times I don't remember, there's another one that was out of whack, that was speaker.
I can't remember what one.
So, I'll send you now, because the, the legislation that you're proposing, this one, though, we need to move in, the actual move that we're contracting down, but they did too. Not just made it those that were, but put the whole money in there. There's no cheap black, they won't spend it, but just a case.
Well, but he said that, that's how they're controlling it, they, they tell people to, but we, we probably, I don't disagree, we should. I don't disagree, we should correct it.
I made to those, I think, my, my.
Yeah, great.
Are we done?
We're done.